I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole meeting for September 24th, 2024, at 5:38 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alder Pearson's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Schwer.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, September 20th, 2024.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business, capital projects, fund budgets, this continued discussion. First item up is the community survey. I have a representative here from Community Perceptions that'll give a little presentation. Scott Gerard is the gentleman that's here. They work with communities beyond the state, don't you? Or is it just pretty much primarily Wisconsin?
Majority in Wisconsin, but we have worked in, I believe, all 50 states at some point.
So Scott will go more into what their company's capable of doing, but my thought and what we had of bringing this forward, we have a lot of things that's going to be going on in this community in the next few years. We're going to be looking at fire service. We need to, you know, we're going to be talking about roads tonight. There's different ways of how we would organize the fire department, pay for the fire department. And there's a whole plethora of things that I think could behoove us as elected officials to try to get more input from the community. Yes, you can go to referendum on certain things and you get a yes/no answer. This is not about doing that. This is about gathering more in-depth responses from the community to kind of help us plan going forward. And with that, I will let Scott give his presentation.
Before we start, are we looking at any numbers on any of these pages?
Yeah. Well, he's going to go through his presentation, but there is in your pile there of stuff, there is a proposal from them. Are you going to go over numbers as well?
I, not as part of the presentation, but we can certainly talk through it.
I'm just looking at what page we should follow here.
Well, it's going to be in the screen in front of you.
Oh, okay. It's not, it's not in here?
No, he's doing electronic.
Okay. Because you have it under capital budget, budgets.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's not in the capital book. Yes, correct.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all for having me. I am Scott Gerard, a project manager with Community Perceptions. Going to give you an overview tonight of our community survey process, the kind of information we gather, and the kind of goals that we have with this survey for the communities we work with. So we have a team bigger than this, but these are the main folks that would work on a project with your city. Bill Foster is our president and founder, still works on many surveys. Rob Demese is our research director. Beverly Zakowski handles all the printing logistics, mailing logistics. A key piece of our process is that the survey gets mailed to every residence in your community. And she handles those logistics. And then there's me, the project manager. So we've been doing these types of surveys since 2002. As an independent Wisconsin-based research firm, we've helped more than 1,000 school districts and communities navigate both strategic planning and referendum planning processes. Some of the goals we have when we enter a survey process with a community beyond just data are educating your community members on the needs of the municipality. So we view it in a lot of ways as an interactive newsletter. The community gets to hear from you on what your needs are, the situation that you've arrived at, the background to how you've arrived there. And you get to hear from your residents on their priorities, their thoughts on funding mechanisms, whatever it is that you want to hear from them and what you need to know going forward. We can establish the tax tolerance for potential projects, understanding what your community is willing to pay for, consider if or when a referendum could take place. And then we also have some basic overall satisfaction metrics that give you good, just information on how your community's feeling about the government. You aren't alone in considering this. Communities around Wisconsin, municipalities, and counties around Wisconsin have been increasingly going to referendum. As you can see on this slide, in 2022, a couple of years ago, was a huge spike, up to 38 counties and municipalities. So, you know, that's, that's a piece of data that you all talking about this, you're not unique. So something a lot of communities are facing. People are more likely to support a plan if they understand the plan and they have a voice in creating the plan. And that's what we hope the survey can do, is again, explain the plan to them, help them understand what's being considered, and give them a voice in helping you all create the final plan. Our approach, as I mentioned earlier, is some folks' surveys are just random sampling, phone calls, I'm sure, at this time of year. And this year, you've all gotten random phone calls or texts from different polling companies. I know I have ignored many. But what we do is take a paper survey and mail it to every residence in the district. And what that does is allows everyone to have a voice if they want to. So it goes to every residence. Everyone has the opportunity to have their say. Everyone has the opportunity to understand the plan. And so even if they don't take the survey, hopefully they read through a little bit of it and better understand what you're considering so that if and when you bring a plan forward, there's some familiarity there. So as I said, we mail a paper survey to households. People can respond both online or via that paper survey. So folks will be able to navigate to a website, use a unique code to access your survey, take it one time, or they can fill out the paper survey if they want to do it, you know, at the kitchen table with a cup of coffee in hand, and mail it back to us. Each survey is pretty customized based on your needs and the situation you're facing. And I'm going to go through some examples here. And these examples, just because they're the most recent ones we've done, are, you know, resulted in a very specific referendum plan. And I think you all are in a bit more of a planning stage at this point. But I think it's a good example of how we will customize to whatever questions you have and information you need from your community. So on the front page, this is an example of how we administer the survey and how folks can take the survey. So that red box there is where the unique access code goes. So folks can direct to our website, that survey2000.com website, enter that code, and it will take them to your survey. They can also, as I said, fill it out on paper and return it to a local office or mail it to us. What our surveys start with is an opening letter, and we customize that to sort of give a big picture overview of the situation that your community's facing and the questions that the survey taker is going to be asked. So in this case, this example was for the Cedarburg Fire Department, and they were considering how to add staff and maintain their services because their volunteer fire department was no longer operating at the capacity necessary. So what we did is we explained, you know, in just a couple paragraphs, the background, and then told folks, this is what we're going to be asking, and we need to understand our taxpayers' priorities as we navigate this situation. In another case, the city of Monona recently did a survey. They were having problems with staffing turnover. And so we, you know, big picture, explained, this is the problem, and this is what we need from you. And then finally, the city of Fitchburg had a lot of different operational pieces to their budget that they wanted to understand from the community. If we were to either make cuts or do a referendum to fund, what are your biggest priorities in the services we offer? Whether that's fire and EMS, public transit, other options. So we gather respondent information, keep it pretty high level, but we do get age. We ensure that the survey taker's primary residence is in your city so that we know whether or not they're a voter. Because, well, even if they only live here part-time, we want to hear their opinion. Ultimately, if there is a plan that would be voted on, we want to know if they're a voter and what they would say to that plan. We can ask if they're a renter or a homeowner. We can get some good communications information about how do you like to receive city information? So we ask, and those are customizable responses, but we ask and see what folks are interested in, how you can communicate with your residents, and then that overall satisfaction, how likely would you be to recommend the city to a friend or family member? Then we get into some background information. So this was, in this example, the city of Fitchburg's problem was their population growth has outpaced their services growth. And so we explained the background of their population growth over the past decade. Again, in the city of Monona, they had high staffing turnover. So we explained how that turnover has looked and the impact of it. And in that Cedarburg example, where it was the fire department, we showed how calls have been increasing over the past decade. Now I'm going to get into some of the questions that we asked, so you can understand the data options to get back. And again, we can customize these questions based on your needs. So again, in Fitchburg, they asked their survey takers to prioritize different areas of their budget. So one case was comprehensive staffing, and they picked out some positions that would be included if they were to add some comprehensive staffing. Other things throughout their survey had included public safety, transit, operational expenses for a new building they were constructing. And ultimately, their survey resulted in, we asked folks, a referendum amount of this much would bring a tax increase of this much, what would you support if the projects were acceptable? In the city of Monona, we had sort of a few different plans that they themselves had created. They had done some work to outline what specific plans would be prioritized. And so we asked about three different plans. This first one was just to maintain services. This is how much funding we would need. Would you support this? And then finally, in the fire department example in Cedarburg, we actually went through a few different ways of funding what was needed for the fire department. And so the three options we presented in that survey were, you know, we could cut other areas of the budget to put more funding toward the fire department, we could implement a wheel tax, or we could pursue a voter-approved referendum. We explained the background and impacts of those different options, and then ultimately asked their survey takers, would you support budget cuts and service reductions? Would you support a wheel tax? Or would you support a referendum? And we were able to give them guidance on what their community most supported. So this methodology has proven to be highly predictive and responsive from communities' community members' priorities. If you do the survey before a referendum, we have found very high accuracy over our 1,000 community projects in the past 20 years in predicting the outcome of said referendum. This is just timeframes to keep in mind. Surveys usually take about eight weeks from the time that we say go on having the survey draft off to the printer. About eight weeks later, you can get data back. There's two to three weeks to print it and mail it, two to three weeks for the survey window, and then a couple of weeks for us to do the data analysis, make sure we get some of those mailed copies back and can include them. And then on the front end of that, there's usually another four to six weeks to draft, review, and finalize a survey, again, depending on the complexity. And that is the presentation I had for you tonight, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Scott, what's your typical response?
Response rate?
Yeah.
I would say mid to high teens. Recently, we saw a couple that, for communities specifically, that surpassed 20%, and that was really great to see. But we're pretty happy with high teens. And once we surpass 10%, we're actually pretty confident in the predictiveness.
Thank you.
You said that, if you go back a couple of slides, I'm brought, right there, go back.
Oh, yeah.
Ali, you can predict things?
Yeah.
Is that because of the way things are worded? Or, I mean, what makes you do that?
Yeah, it's the way we gather data, the fact that we send the survey to every residence. It has proven over those years that I think we're at about 94%. If we say a referendum will pass and that plan is taken to ballot, it passes. If we say it won't, and a community chooses to take it to ballot anyway, it doesn't. We've been 94, right, 94% of the time.
And even with the high teens return rate?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, once we surpass that 10%, it's shown to be...
I mean, that's only one-fifth of a, or one-sixth of a sampling, which is, it can be anywhere. I mean...
Once it surpasses 10%, we found it correlates.
In your pile there, like I had mentioned, there is a proposal from Community Perceptions. And the second last page has actually got some pricing numbers on it, on the different phases and what the costs will be. I have budgeted for the capital cost, the total cost of $25,000 in the budget. If you total the numbers in front of you, you're going to see about $11,000 for their work. I'm high on the $25,000 number because I'm guessing, we're going to probably have the same company that prints our newsletter do it. And that's going to go, I'm guessing from a cost standpoint, it's probably going to be anywhere from free, if we decide to have them sell ads with the, like they do, which I don't recommend, to probably a cost of around, I would say, in the most, $3,000 on it. There is some added cost. If you look, going on to the back page, there are optional services that go into, you know, coming into night meetings and things like that. I think the $25,000 number is a pretty safe number, as long as we don't pay for the return envelope on the survey. That can, for one, it shoots the printing price way up, and then you have that postage cost on there. And I'm pretty confident that we can still get a significant amount back by not having a postage-paid envelope come back.
But we have to pay for the postage going out. Is that included?
Correct. Yeah, postage going out, I should add, it'd be similar to the newsletter. So I think if I'm going off the top of my head, it's about $1,400, $1,500 for postage. So our, at least, I mean, the council's going to weigh in on this, but my initial thoughts is we're not looking to predict if a referendum is going to pass or not. I would like to do this more from a planning process and getting feedback from the community.
Yeah.
How well, how well is that type of data that you get back?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can get some really strong data for you. We, I could see something like what I showed with that Fitchburg survey where you're asking about prior, how high a priority different areas are. Some, you know, the Cedarburg survey makes me think, you mentioned earlier, I think, thinking about ways of funding things. We can ask, you know, these are the impacts of different funding structures that we are considering. I think there's some pretty good data you can get to give you some direction ahead of whatever you intend to do long-term for the budget.
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott?
Multi-topic surveys, are they as effective as a singular topic survey?
Well, I guess, what do you mean by multi-topic?
We're probably aiming at several different aspects of community life in Mesquite. Not just the fire department, not just a budgetary situation.
Yeah. I would say, I think how we would explain that in, you know, the opening letters that I showed, I think it would be the single topic of life in Mesquite. And that is sort of the topic, and there's these different services that are a part of life, and we want to understand how you, the residents, how much you value these services. So I think they're all related. I don't think that that would change the response rate too much.
Great. Thank you.
I guess I'm, I'm just a little confused by this whole presentation and everything. We originally talked at a COW on the 3rd of June for potentially a survey on what to do at the old police station.
And actually...
And I just, we were asked for pricing on that, and this seems like it's just snowballed into something completely different.
Okay. So if you go back to the June meeting that you're referring to, the impetus of that was initially the police department, but you guys have decided which direction you're going to go on that. So that was taken off the table. However, if you recall at that meeting, I preferred getting a survey with lots, we have lots of things coming up in this community. We have, you know, public safety issues, police issues, fire issues, a number of things, our roads. I had thrown that all out there at the time of, this would be a good vehicle to try to get information back from the people that we're trying to represent. I mean, I don't think we should making, these are some pretty big decisions that we're going to be looking at in the next year, and doing them in a vacuum, I don't think is, is the wisest course of action. Now, if you don't want to go that route, that's fine, but I'm presenting an option of one way that you could do that.
Well, I don't know if you're looking for answers right now, but this is just, I need to absorb this.
Sure.
I mean, for me to say yes or no or whatever today, you know, I had no, nothing in front of me until just now. So I got to absorb this and maybe hear from some people and, and see if a survey is the way we... I'm not, you know, I'm not a big survey guy. You don't answer your phone for polls. I don't either. I don't answer surveys. You know, I just open my mouth, but I got to absorb this. I'll leave it at that. It's just the easiest way to say, I'm not, I'm not ready for any of this yet at this point.
So the one thing I can tell you all is even, it's, it's in the capital budget right now. You could vote just to completely remove it, and then it's gone. You could, when capital budget gets approved, you can approve it. However, the money doesn't get spent until you ultimately, we decide that, okay, we're going to spend this. And then we would call them in and design the survey, and even, I'll be honest, and I wouldn't recommend it at that point, but as we're going through that process, also you're like, this is not going to get us to where we want. Stop at any, I mean, that's why the pricing's in different phases. So you can stop at that point. The money's not spent until you spend it.
No, I got that. I got all that. I just want to give my, I just need to absorb this. I don't know what anybody else is thinking, but there's, there's seven of us here. We only heard from a couple. I'd like to hear from some more and, and see what, what people are thinking here.
Sure.
I think a survey just for community awareness of up-and-coming major events that are going to affect tax bills, like roads and like fire services. To me, the more the public knows about what's happening in the future, the more acceptance we're going to get, and the more response we'll get from the community as far as what's important. I think the survey's an ideal vehicle to do that.
And who words the survey? Would that be the council?
Who what?
Words.
Well, they will, they'll come up, they'll meet with us first, find out what topics we want to go over. It's a collaborative thing. I mean, ultimately, yes, you approve the questions, or, you know, the council approves the questions. So if you don't like the way it's worded in their draft, you would say, well, I think that's leading, or it doesn't cover what we want, and you change it.
Yeah, we do have some major projects coming up, there's no question. And they're going to be, there's a big impact on the city with them. I don't see a problem with talking about a survey and seeing if we can get information we need on that. I would not want to shock the community someday and just say, oh, by the way, we need to combine, we need to take over our fire department and your taxes are going up. I think the survey would definitely help them see how and why.
So the, this is going to basically cover the major projects that we foresee in the future?
That's the way, that's the way I envision it.
Fire, roads, police. Is it going to also possibly discuss maybe, you know, is a hybrid fire, emergency services and fires separately?
So I envision, if we're going to be talking about public safety and fire, there's different mechanisms on how you can pay for that. You could just go do a referendum and say, you know, the fire department costs X amount, and here's the impact it's going to have on your taxes. You can do that. Some communities do fire districts. So when you add it to the property tax, the only people that are paying it are property taxpayers. School, yeah, schools, retirement, most retirement homes in Mesquite that are tax-exempt. There are other nonprofits, there's a lot of churches, a lot of those use those services, but they're not contributing because they're not paying property taxes. If you go to a fire district, that would be something where every, it's almost like our water utility, where a residential property is assigned a unit of like one. And then based on what type of entity you are after that besides a home, you're giving a multiplier of that. So, you know, a restaurant may have a multiplier of two, a retirement home might have a multiplier of 10, based on the type of predicted uses of that service. So it's just a different funding way, but, you know, so that would be something that, without getting too far in the weeds on that, we could probably dumb that down a little bit and explain different ways of doing it. Disadvantage of doing, pulling it off the tax rolls is it's not tax-deductible then. A fee is not, you can't deduct it on your federal income tax like you can. So there's a number of things that, yes, you can, that I would want to get some feedback from the community on.
You think that, that would be part of the survey as well, then?
I think we could, I, my, my thought is we should, we would work that into it, yes. Not only are you going to go forward with a full-time department or not, or a hybrid, or whatever we decide to do, but different ways of paying for it.
Yeah, I think the survey is a, a good way to get feedback. You know, it's not saying that if we decide down the road, you know, before it's done to, to pull it, like you said, I think, if I understood you correctly, right?
To what?
If, if we put it in capital and decide not to do it.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean the money's spent.
Correct. We do that all the time. We've got items every year in capital that we don't spend, and it just, that money just rolls over.
I guess, you know, the part I got to absorb is, I feel that maybe we're putting the cart in front of the horse without discussing what, what we're going to do, what we're putting on the survey and discussing the options of what's going to... So a fire department, I have no options in front of me before I do a survey, you know, if it's ambulance, if it's whatever, I mean, if it's a road program, I have no, no information to put all this together to say we need a survey.
And you're correct, you don't have any information yet, but right now, we're just trying to plan for next year's budget that, and I know we're, we are going to be having a discussion about fire and rescue next year. We're either going to be having a conversation that the fire department was successful in the grant they got, or they weren't, or they only got, they got X amount of it, and, you know, here's what our needs are, and here's where we have to be in the future.
Do we want to put the survey out before we know all that?
No, we need, no, we need all that information, but we're just...
Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I get the feeling that we're putting...
No, no, we're not approve, we're not going to send him off today and say, go predict...
No, I understand, but we could do that in a month, and I still feel like, I need a lot more information about all these different programs.
I'm thinking more like six months or more down the road.
Well, yeah, I would think at least several meetings on each subject.
This is, this is next year sometime, but it's going to be next year where we have this conversation. So, Alderman, Decker.
How many surveys are we talking altogether?
What do you mean?
Over...
One.
One survey.
One typically, an eight-page survey.
Yep. Eight pages are most typical length.
Any other questions? Does anyone have objection to putting it into the budget? I mean, you still have another kick at this in, in October when we approve the whole thing, but I'm just trying to do a straw poll now. Yeah. Alderman, Decker?
I would like some more time to think about it myself.
And you will. I just want to know if there's like any hard objections right now. I mean, I, it's understandable that you need more time to digest this, I get that. All right. Thank you. Thanks. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda, under capital projects. So when we started this whole thing, we were talking about roads. So you asked me to come back with different options. So Scott's going to, Scott, our Scott is going to come up here, and Ryan probably, I'm not sure if they're both coming or one. And in front of you, there's a packet from Baird, and it has six different options. So it has borrowing options of two, four, or $7 million in either a 10-year amortization or a 20-year amortization. In the corner, written, handwritten in the corner of each page has the impact to a $400,000 home. So for the different options on there. So that's the financial part of it. Scott can answer questions of, if you go with like a two, four, or $7 million, what will that get you? So, Scott.
Okay. So again, I believe we talked about it, about, right now, we're averaging about 2.26 miles per year in the last four years with our program of $750,000. So the best way to do it is, if you're thinking $2 million, let's just double it. Let's just say it's 4.5 miles of road, okay, if we do 2 million. So just think of this as we do it. It's about $1 million for 2.26. Every time you add a little bit more, just, we're just adding, like doubling that road cost, okay? Or doing the amount, not road costs, doing the amount of roads that we're going to do. So instead of 2.26, we would hope to do 4.5. Now, again, other benefits, the bit more roads you do, usually the price goes down because we're doing more supply for quantities. So, any questions on that? I'm just trying to make this real simple for you.
Again, how many mi, again, how many miles of road are in that real bad category? I couldn't recall offhand.
We did, I thought we were averaging about 50, 60 miles, if I remember right. Real bad, like we're talking five to less.
Yep.
So for those in the audience and watching at home, every two years, Scott and Ryan go and grade every one of our roads that are city roads in the city of Mesquite, not the county roads or the, anything else, but the city roads are all graded on a scale of 1 to 10. 10 being perfect, one being probably a dirt road at that point.
Yes.
And so we're typically right now, we only react to, because of budgetary constraints, threes or less?
Yep, we're doing threes or less.
Threes or less. The number of threes or less that we have right now, it far outpaces what we annually, can annually budget towards in our operating. So we're looking at increasing that through some borrowing.
And, and right now our budget is, I can't remember, 750,000.
750,000 and every so many years we add an extra.
Million bucks, but.
So how many, how many years is that?
We only did every three year, but we only done it once.
We just started that, right.
Yeah, I mean, again.
That's the plan. So every three years, so that's roughly a million a year when you put it together for a three-year period. That's what we're running and a million a year gets us 2.6 miles.
About 2.26.
Is there scales of economy that if they were to do a lot of?
That's what we're hoping for. If like, let's say we double it, we would try to get a better deal.
Prices are coming down.
Yeah, but you, the more quantity of pavement and asphalt, we should get it at a smaller cost per ton as we do, as we did more quantity, as we did a larger quantity. Also too, mobilization. Every time if we do a bigger project for one year, we're not paying mobilization for two. Do you know what I mean? Because we're, think of it, we can attack this and maybe like next year if we do one subdivision, we possibly could do two subdivisions, so.
Again, what are we, what are we looking for here? Answers to, for some, is this going to be part of the survey too?
Well, I mean, it could be if that's what you want to do. It's, you had asked for different options. This is where we're at. I'll be honest, right now is not the best time to be borrowing money. It's, you know, rates are high there.
And oil prices are still up, yeah.
Right, you know, it's, I guess from a planning standpoint, talking to Scott is, you know, okay, say your tolerance was, you know, one of these numbers per year where you think, you know, $24 or, you know, whatever the different options that are on there. You know, maybe we, we kind of have that in our queue of, okay, rates have dropped. Council kind of wants to get their best bang for their buck on, you know, if we added an extra $50 on, $50 onto the average tax bill, we bring that back at that point. This is all planning at this point, just trying to figure out what you guys want. You had, you, council had asked for options and that's what I'm bringing back.
We've been pounding the roads for.
Scott, assuming normal maintenance, what's the life of a road?
What is it supposed to be or what is it supposed to? So, you know, when we first did it, they always say that it's supposed to be 20 years when you looked at life cycle. Our current life cycle, which I just did, is 67.3 years, you know? So I think shooting for 20 years is ridiculous, we will never get it. But if we can try to get in the 40s, I think, I think we're looking pretty good. But again, it all depends on what it is. You know, when we go on rate a road, one of the, some of our best roads are these smaller roads that we can make in one pass and we know put a seam down the middle and that road never gets water in it and it lasts forever. And then you got other ones where you get more water into it and it just starts crumbling away. What's happened is, you know, I've been here in May, it'll be eight years. We have not added to the road program. We're, we've been at $750,000. We're just not spending enough money on our roads. And we gained more roads. I mean, we're up to, as we gain new subdivisions, that's more roads that we have to maintain. That's, that's kind of like what we're doing. So we're just not spending enough money. I think I showed you before, you know, you got Village of Heartland, they're doing a million dollars and they only have to do 46 miles. We've got 152 miles worth of roads to do. Franklin, who has about the same one as us, they have 169, they spend 1.5. So they do double our budget and they got the same amount of roads. I passed that spreadsheet out. I think I talked to you guys three or four times about it. It just comes down to that and one of the options was to borrow. And mayor reached out and gave you a couple of numbers and stuff for you guys to think about. The next year where we plan to do the extra million was slated for 2026, just to let you know.
So the numbers you have in front of you and the impact I have, so even if you were to approve that, which I'm not recommending you do tonight, this is assuming that we would borrow sometime next year and the debt service would not begin until 2026, so.
So are we currently borrowing for roads right now?
We are not.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't borrowed within the last few years for roads or? I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for that.
No.
Okay, so the other question I got, I kind of touched on this before. The operational budget has moved things into the capital budget, which can be, could be disturbing in the long run. The capital budget with the landfill funds, 20% of that is, has to go to a certain purpose. The other 80%, can we use any of that money for road program?
You could. Right now we're using it for other capital items, so it's just prioritized.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm getting at is do we need to start looking at what we're doing with the capital budget and start moving some of that landfill funds into the roads? And move some of that capital budget that should be in operational back into operational. I don't know the effect of that. Sharon would probably know more of that than me. She could tell me the effects. Is that going to hurt us also on the tax side too?
We can't, there is no room in operational to move anything back into it.
Well, I saw Sharon moving, moving around over there. I don't know if it made her squirmy or what, but what, what are you thinking about my comment? Yeah, because I, you know, I mean, we go through all this, it's all hunky-dory and we all want everything. I mean, some of it is definitely needs, some of it is a want need and some of it is a want that we're doing on the capital budget with the landfill funds I'm talking. And, and, and maybe we got to start looking at that because, you know, I'm a homeowner and I'm a resident and I'm a taxpayer before I'm an alderman. And I, I like our taxes low and I want to do whatever we can, I think hopefully all of us do, to keep it, keep it that way. I mean, you know, looking at $2 million or $4 million at 20 or 30, 40 bucks, 50 bucks a year, that's not bad, but that's on top of everything else we're doing. We have landfill money, we have higher, shared revenue coming in. We've raised taxes. I guess we, we need to figure out what are we doing with all the new money coming in and plus new properties? And then I think Bob, you, you mentioned the TIF district or something? Do we have any money coming from that or something?
Well, is there going to be any TIF districts? Are there going to be any that are going to be paid off soon to come back into the budget? Okay.
Okay, and then some of the concerns I have over that, and, and you know, I drilled the fire truck a little bit, you know, not, not, not meaning to beat up the fire department, like I said, is all these expenses are coming in and if we, you know, the questions I have on, I'm just using the fire truck as an example. It's going to take one, two, three, four years for that to come in. We're going to give them $850,000 to buy that truck, but that money is going to go back into the general fund. I want to make sure if we do that, that that money is there for the, the fire trucks so that in four years when we have to pay for that, it's like, oh yeah, that wasn't a general fund, but we spent it on something else.
No, it stays, it'll stay earmarked for it once you approve it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't get spent for something else. I mean, it can be earmarked, but you know, I mean, it's not an escrow account or it's sitting there only for that purpose. And, and these are just questions that are coming up in my mind and how are we going to keep taxes at a, at a fair level? I, I think that's one of our benefits in Meskego is we have a clean, safe community that's affordable.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you or on any of this. You asked for options and I just brought back.
No, no, I'm on the road program before anybody else. I've been bringing it up. You know, so do I want to spend money on it? No, but do I want it fixed? Yes, you know, I mean, I want everything, so.
So, so based on, based on the numbers you gave us, we're looking at 21 years to fix our number three roads?
Was that without borrowing, Eileen? I mean, Eileen?
Under our current.
I believe, yeah.
Yes.
No, I think it's longer than that.
Longer than that.
Yeah.
I thought it was 60 some years or something.
Yeah, yeah, that was longer than it was just like how many miles I thought you like. I think that might have been the main. Four and below. It's, again, we showed last time with all the spreadsheets, we, we're just not keeping up, so.
So we're looking at about $20 million. If we want to do everything today, we're looking at about $20 million to fix all our roads that are under fours.
Again, you know, and you're putting everything up at today's price, you know? It's kind of hard to kind of look at it, you know, because if we start maybe having a little bit more budget, we start tacking it and we start getting better prices, you think about it, and some of our other roads, we're doing a better job of crack sealing and we can make them last as long as we can, maybe we, we can start like getting ahead of it a little bit, you know? That's kind of like the game plan here. But right now we're just barely keeping above water. I mean, most people get a call about roads. I would say every one of you have gotten a call about a road or fixing it. But we're just, we're just don't have enough money spending it, so.
So where do you come up with the pricing that you give us? Do you actually get some estimates from reputable like Payne and Dolan? Or how are, how are we coming up with the pricing?
The prices you see are based off our last four years of road program. So they're actual prices. So what we do is this, we put it out to public bid every year. We got the prices that we got are the ones, that's how you got the numbers. So we, this is based on our last four years and even including this year of our bids. Yeah, so, but then we.
So you're figuring out the square footage.
Yeah, yes.
And then you're doing an estimate because of that.
Yeah, we're giving.
But you're doing it off a real quote.
Real quote. Now, we add also inflation too. Remember when we were going out, we averaged about 5% if you look at that spreadsheet. Because we, some years we have two, some years you have nine, you know, back and forth. So that's what we used. So do you remember the last two times when we went through this? With, with all the costs, that's what we said about the inflation, that we use 5%. That's how we got it all out. But the numbers are real numbers that Payne and Dolan, Stark, well, whoever wins it. So this past year was Payne and Dolan, the year before was Stark and then Payne and Dolan. So we're using actual numbers.
Any other questions? Well, since it doesn't, I mean, the dollar amount wouldn't impact taxes this next year anyway. It's, you have numbers in front of you just for digestion purposes. This is something that we can bring back and have a dedicated committee of the whole and, you know, try to figure out a plan, maybe later this year. If you want to attack it for next year or beginning of part. The idea is when, the best time to go out to bid for this is January, February?
We try to get our bids out in summer, January. We want to be the first one out there.
So, so we could talk later this year or we can talk, you know, middle of next year for the following year.
And I like Rob's thinking too of hitting that landfill if at all possible. You're marking some of that money for roads going forward. I think it's a great idea.
Definitely an overhaul. You have to look at the operational and, and the, and the capital budget and figure out what. I mean, Sharon, you're going to put something together that we can kind of take a look at and get an understanding on? And then discussions, because there's no way I understand it without having something in front of me and being able to look at it, so.
Fair enough. Any other comments? Any objection to jumping over to Big Lake to let the commissioners take care of their stuff and get out of here? And then we'll jump back to the call? All right.
Fine.
We're in recess at 6:21. Jumping back to the committee of the whole at 6:26. Continuing on with the mayor's proposed 2020, should be 2025 budget. All right, mayor's 2025 proposed budget summary comments. Existing tax levy caps tied to new, net new construction requires us to look, to look service cuts and tough budgeting choices. And this year is no different. Balancing a tight budget with a 1.8%, with 1.8% of new tax revenue and a projected 3.1% inflation increase requires us to look closely at service levels and how we, and the service levels we provide and how we fund those services. As we continue to grow as a community, we need to continue to monitor the investments in the services we provide to the taxpayers. Those services by and large are the product of our hardworking employees. We need to continue to find ways to maintain our existing staff as well as recruit the best and the brightest for open positions. This budget makes a priority of those goals so we can maintain the image of being a great community to live and raise a family. Based on the goals listed below, a balanced budget as prepared by the department heads and I is proposed to once again maintain a low mill rate of $3.83, which again is one of the lowest mill rates of any municipality in Waukesha County. This is the fourth year in a row of maintaining a low rate. Following is my 2025 budget goals. Maintain a low property tax rate. Apply net new construction, net new growth as allowed per state levy limits. Maintain our high bond rating, which is AA1. Limit one-time funding sources. Recognize and respect the expertise of incumbent employees through competitive pay increases and benefit packages abided by the general operation fund balance policy. Our budget process. This evening, the committee of the whole received the 2025 proposed budget for initial review. We will however, continue researching further, for further budget adjustments as we go through this process. The goal is to have an improved budget on October 22nd with a public hearing and budget adoption that evening. If there are specific questions regarding any line item, I encourage council members to contact the respective department heads or myself in advance to discuss items and to aid in identifying the precise information needed. Significant changes from 2024 to 2025. Revenue. The proposed 2025 general fund reflects an increase in shared revenue of $23,079. Investment earnings increase of $170,000 and a tax levy increase of $213,738, which is within the state levy limit. The additional funds will be utilized to offset expenditure increases in protected services, public works, technology, human resources, and employee, employee pay adjustments and merit increases. Our net new construction has increased from about 1.61% last year to 1.82% this year. Expenditures. The proposed 2025 general fund expenditure budget is in balance with the proposed revenue budget resulting in a 4.97 increase over 2024. In support of the goal to recognize and respect the expertise of incumbent employees, this budget reflects a recommended cost of living adjustment of 2% in April and 2% additional in October for non-represented employees. The police union agreement is a three-year agreement from 2023 to 2025 calls for wage increases in 2025 of 2% in January and 2% in July. In order to maintain our conservation efforts, funding will be shifted from the operational budget to the landfill and open space conservation fund, which is funded through the landfill. I'm sorry, it was, I missed it. The land and open space conservation fund, which is funded through the landfill. Finally, our initial health insurance renewal initially came in at 18% over last year. Through negotiations and a minor plan adjustment, the final renewal rate is currently at 8.5% increase over 2024 rates, which is a budget increase of approximately $270,000. These expenses along with added costs for the assessor's reevaluation, fuel and utilities, building maintenance and supply cost increases amount to a net expenditure increase of $890,833 for 2025. Taxes. The entire available net new growth is proposed to help increase expenditures within the general operation, operating and debt service fund. Based upon assessor provided data, the net impact will again produce an estimated city tax rate of $3.83 per 1,000 of assessed value, a similar rate compared to the previous three years. So you're just getting this tonight. We're not really looking for any kind of reaction. Obviously you just got it, so take your time over the next few weeks, dive into it, ask questions. If you have specific questions on specific departments, please reach out to those department heads or myself. You can reach out to Sharon as well and we hopefully can answer those questions. If you have specific suggestions or something that you want to see changed, do the same with that. And it's continued conversation right up until the 22nd.
So for, just to clarify this, we were at 382, we're going to go to 383, so that's one cent more per thousand.
Correct.
On value to house, so people understand that, so.
So it's like a $4 increase on a $400,000 house.
Right, just so, just to put that out there so they understand it. And then one quick question, again, you know, I'm starting to see this, maybe I'm paying attention to it more. In your third final statement there before the word taxes comes up on this thing, you shifted the operational budget to the landfill, so. up on this thing, you shifted the operational budget to the landfill, so I, I...
I shifted the conservation coordinator position to be funded through the landfill. It had previously been that way until about two thousand nineteen, we moved it into operating. My suggestion is so we can maintain that service to fund it with the part of the landfill that has to be used for conservation purposes. And if you dive into the budget when you get in there, there is a, a special revenue budgets and it's listed in there and it shows the revenue that, that, that fund gets and then this expenditure taken out of that and, and what the fund balance would be.
Okay. I just, yeah, I'm just gonna, you know, I'm just looking at that. And then one last question, limited one-time funding sources back in your highlights with the dots.
Correct.
Do we have a one-time funding source that we're looking at doing for this budget?
There's, there's a couple things that we brought over, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what they are, but there are, there's a minimum amount that we have in there right now. As we go through the budget and make some further adjustments between now and the twenty-second, we would be replacing that, those, those items that were one-time items with any budget cuts or savings that we find between now and the twenty-second.
Okay. Just so, just so I have an idea.
So, my priority, my priority would be to continue diving in and having conversations on different areas and as we find those pulling, keeping the actual rate the same, so the overall budget will be the same, but the source would be changing, so we'd be pulling away from those one-time sources.
Okay.
Any other questions? I look forward to hearing from you on this going forward. Next item is discuss, review and recommend water and sewer utility budgets. Jenny, are you doing that?
I think it's, it's on?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're gonna start with the sewer utility budget.
I, you gotta...
You might have to bring it closer or tilt it down a little.
Turn the volume up or something, I don't know.
Just like karaoke, just bring it right on.
Okay. So, we're gonna start with the sewer utility budget. On pages one and two, you'll see a summary of the operating revenues and expenditures. The revenue is generated almost entirely from user service charges. The increase is due to growth in the community and the basic operating expenditures are mostly MMSD-related capital user charges. The non-operating revenues and expenditures consist of interest earnings and connection fees. There are no debt-related costs in the sewer utility, those were all paid off in two thousand and five. Page three is the capital projects, which were discussed at the prior budget meeting and we don't have any changes in there. And then on page four, we have schedule three. This schedule presents changes in working capital within the four sewer utility funds and are defined on the last page. Overall, each fund is projected to remain positive and maintain a very healthy financial position due to stable growth and net position as was reflected in the twenty twenty-three audit results. There are no significant changes to the report, although rates are recommended to remain the same. An adjustment will most likely be proposed in the next few years to offset the rising operation and capital costs. And that is it for sewer.
Any questions on sewer? Thank you.
Okay, on to the water. On page one, we have the basic summary of operating revenues and expenditures. The last three percent rate increase was in January of twenty twenty-one. Significant operating changes are due to rising fuel, utilities and supply costs. Page two is the capital projects, which were discussed at prior meetings again and includes no changes. And page three, schedule three, the water utility funds are very similar to the sewer utility. This schedule also presents the changes in working capital within the four funds of the utility, which are defined on the last page. Results are indicating each fund is projected to have adequate balances, as was also reflected in the twenty twenty-three audit. However, increases in capital costs and inflation is recognized by the Public Service Commission and therefore the utility is qualified for a simplified rate case adjustment of four point one percent effective January of twenty-five. The required publication notice for that will be posted on November fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. And that is all I have for water.
Any questions on water? All right. Thank you. Just bouncing back, one thing I mentioned during, and I should clarify this, during the, my, our budget presentation, I made a comment about the health insurance being at eight point five percent increase with a minor plan adjustment, and I'm sure the employees are wondering what that minor plan adjustment is, so there is a out-of-network coverage on there. What it would, it would be removing the out-of-network coverage, but except for urgent care and emergency room, it's almost not used at all by, over the last year or since we've been with them. So, there's, there are few people that are actually using it. What it comes down to is, we use United Health, they have a nationwide network, so they, if you do your homework, there's, if you're out of town or you have a, a, a child that's out of town at college, if they, they're still, if they get sick, they still can go to urgent care, they still can go to the emergency room. If they're setting up a doctor's appointment there for some reason, they just need to call the insurance and find a United Healthcare in the area because it's a nationwide network, they should be able to find something. And because of that, we save, we save an additional one percent, which is like twenty thousand dollars. So, that was the one plan adjustment that I made, it really shouldn't have much of an impact to anyone. And that's all I have. Communications, Miss Lani's business?
I'm not on here. I wrote this down, I, I know there was some confusion last week and I apologize and mostly probably on my part, but I just wanted to make a motion and clarify what I intended for last week with getting bids for, or excuse me, some quotes for tearing down the old police station.
We, I, can we, wait, I, I wanna let you talk, but I just wanna make sure because it's not an agendized item, where are we on that?
What are you, where are you joining?
Well, I will, I just wanna make a motion to get, to get three quotes for tearing down the old police station, you know, per our purchase agreement, purchasing agreement that is how we should do it for efficiency and transparency. And then also, I would like it to come back to clarifying what I did, right, last...
Can I make a statement here? I think, I think that was on a cow and it...
It was moved to public works.
Okay. Okay.
No. No, it was here and, and Bob wasn't here.
Didn't hear, but the motion was to move it to public works.
And that was not what I intended, I am, and I turned to you and said I would like it to go to the, back to the cow where it started. And I'd also like to have three bids, three, you know, three bids on this and the people that do, or, you know, three quotes and the people that do the quotes to have them at the meeting so we can ask them about the quotes and get some direct input from them about what's involved with tearing down the police station.
Is this classified as a reconsideration?
I, I don't know what this is.
I, I, I don't think so because she voted to, yes, right, reconsideration.
She voted yes, if it's a reconsideration, she could, but it doesn't sound...
Okay, let me ask this question, let's try to simplify it, let's try to simplify it. Scott, are you gonna get three, three quotes for this? Is that the easiest way to do it? I, I'm just trying to simplify it so it, it goes. I mean, what would be the process if we didn't do three quotes?
So, the, he, he can talk, but I can, I'm gonna talk ahead of him on this. For basic costs, we're gonna have somebody come in and do a walkthrough on it and give us an, their estimate of what it will cost. That number will come back to public works. If it's something that you're interested in proceeding with, before we do the work, we would actually probably put it out to bid or get three estimates at that time. But you don't wanna have three people come in and give you an estimate, words gonna get around and they're not gonna do it. That's what it's gonna...
So, here's the process based off of last, we already have some meetings already scheduled for people to come through, walk through. We are going to get very detailed costs that I would present then at public works and public works is gonna have this, 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 sort of be like probably ten line items, okay? Once you guys see the cost estimate, then you say at public works, we, let's move forward. I would then create specs and publicly bid this so that we then send it out and people would publicly bid it based on specs and, and design. Does that make sense? I, I'll give you analysis, but you have to publicly bid this to get then for someone to take it down. Does that make sense?
So, we need to build a spec sheet, which is the first risk in going through, giving us the estimate, but we would take those specifications and put that out to bid. But we are getting way outside with some of this.
If we leave it at what Scott just said, even if you're okay with that, then we leave it alone. If we're going to change what you wanna do, then let's set it for next week.
Yeah, cuz I wanted to come back to the cow, not to public works.
Then we're gonna have to set that for another meeting.
We can't do that tonight.
Right.
Because it wasn't agendized.
There's nothing on the agenda about this. We're already way over where we should be.
We're way over, yeah. Yeah, I think you, you got a request to put it on another meeting.
So, I can put it on the next cow and you can...
Put it on the next cow.
Okay, then I would, I would like to have a cow then on the eighth, on October eighth.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, it's regular meeting date.
No.
I don't have a problem recognizing Kathy.
All right, there you go. What's the point at this?
Definition, maybe, I don't know.
Definition of what, Heidi?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not, I'm confused on, on the definition as a general rule.
You haven't been recognized yet.
I, I'm just saying, I'm confused on the, on the definition of what we're trying to put together here, so.
I mean, oh, we're done with the discussion, we're all ready to adjourn.
Any objections?
We don't want somebody, we, we're already talking about something that's not agendized, I don't need somebody coming from the audience adding to that.
No.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, yeah. We are, we, we, it really is past the agenda, I mean, it really is.
And, and it's all set, you've got it set for next, there's no reason, this isn't coming down this week.
Again, I was just clarifying what I did last week and that's why...
It's not coming down next week, you've got it for October eighth, you're...
No one's objecting, we just can't do it tonight, so.
And, and I, and I can sympathize with, with, with you because it was confusing when you made your...
It was very confusing.
Yeah, because you didn't get a chance to do it.
Enough, enough talk on this though, okay?
It was confusing.
I get that. All right, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. We're adjourned at six forty-five.